I told you about the guy from BP with the bear, didn't I? This guy worked out in Montana, he's with BP, we're talking to him about water and all. And he had this picture of a bear. And by the time I was done with the conversation, I said, you know, I said, I hope you didn't meet that bear. He said, I met that bear. He's hiking out at Glacier, I think. On this kind of a narrow path, and there's about fifteen people behind him. At drop off on the other side, and a cliff on this side, and he comes around the corner, and there's a bear. He had a picture of it. It was a big bear. They had their bear repellent, and I guess the bear decided to go around him, but aye, aye, aye. I think I'd have been off the cliff.
I got seven of them deer running through my wall, Paul.
Do you? Okay. The whole herd.
Yeah, the wife loves them.
Yeah.
So did I.
That's why mine's in the basement with me.
Yeah, ours is over the fireplace and in the great room, so. So far, it's worked out for several years. I don't know how much longer, but maybe the next time we paint, I gotta take them all down.
Every morning, I have four of them right in my backyard, live.
Live, okay.
Oh, they come. I feed them. That's why.
All right, we want to get started here in our committee. How's everybody feeling good? Paul, I'm just gonna let you just introduce and take care of it from here. As far as if we're gonna talk, you wanna wait till we get to the legislation or?
Well, maybe if we can call that one out of order, it's up to you.
Yeah, that's fine. We can do that. I'm gonna go ahead and send it to, uh, for our ordinance number twenty zero or oh, zero, three. And that's gonna be laws and ordinance with Ms. Norris. We're gonna open up your committee if we could.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and open up the committee at six oh five. We have a third reading. Twenty dash oh dash zero three, an ordinance authorizing the city of New Franklin to enter into agreements with the city of Green to create a regional council of governments for the purpose of sharing services and to create a shared public safety dispatch center and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage. The mayor had kindly sent us the numbers that we were looking at so that we could compare costs. Significant savings of about a hundred thousand, assuming, you know, that we are budgeting correctly and looking at the one-time expenses correctly. We'll talk about that in more detail. A couple of people here to speak tonight. With that, Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, we are on the third reading on this, and the ordinance would authorize the city to enter two agreements. One would be Exhibit A, and that would be the agreement to create the Council of Governments with a board that would consist of the mayors of the two cities with a cost-sharing formula that had been worked out between, uh, New Franklin and Green. The, uh, which puts the, uh, New Franklin's share at about forty percent and Green's at about sixty percent. Uh, would authorize a meeting, uh, to, uh, within ten days of formation of the COG, and a COG would be formed when the, when both cities adopt this ordinance, the COG is formed. The COG then would have to meet, adopt bylaws. We're working on those bylaws right now. Uh, and then that gets sent down to the state auditor's office, and the state auditor's office has to make final approval. By way of timeline, Green's third reading, uh, would be October the thirteenth. So, um, we would hope that there'd be a passage, and then by October fourteenth or fifteenth, we'd probably have the COG meeting the following week, somewhere around the twentieth. And approve the bylaws, get it down to Columbus. Probably sometime mid-November, we think, when it comes back and it's been approved by the auditor and the COG is in place. Then that also takes us into Exhibit B of this ordinance, which authorizes the, uh, the city to enter an agreement to create the joint, uh, dispatch center. And that's what, of course, this is all about. It would, uh, we would fund it through in-kind contributions or appropriations according to that cost formula. And, uh, from there, it would be a matter of forming that, uh, that dispatch center. Those conversations are ongoing right now. As a matter of fact, we met with, uh, we had a meeting today relative to it. Um, the thinking, this is a new, this will be a new political entity, this COG. Uh, and this will be a joint dispatch between Green, uh, and, and New Franklin. On the upside, the cost savings, and we've tried to be, um, conservative in the sense of estimating high, not low, on these expenses. Uh, and you can see that, uh, that the share, the projected annual share for New Franklin is in the range of five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, right now, uh, we had appropriated, uh, six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars this year. So, we think somewhere in the range of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, we're gonna have some additional cost that's not on the cost estimates relative to the, uh, to the CAD. And we're moving, whether we stayed here or whether we went with them, we're switching over to Tyler because that's what the county's on, and the state is trying to get everybody on the same system, and and we don't want to be an outlier on that. So, that'll be another resolution separate and apart from this. The, uh, expense on that will be, it's sped over five years. If we kept it in-house, it'd be about thirty thousand a year. Then there's about twenty-eight thousand a year for an annual expense on that. Now, we're, the reason I don't have that in front of you yet is we're talking with Summit County, and this is a joint venture, this, uh, this CAD, that Summit County has encouraged all the different municipalities to get involved in. We really had, it's not really clear yet. Once we, once the joint dispatch is formed, that's who's gonna be responsible for the CAD. We're still gonna have some responsibility because of our police, and, and this is, uh, we don't have police with the, uh, with the COG. So, that number will likely go down significantly, but even if you figure five years at thirty thousand, and then a twenty-eight thousand, there may be another sixty-eight thousand for about five years, but that still leaves us where we, we project our savings are gonna be in the range of a hundred and fifty thousand. So, we're still gonna net uh, at least initially about a hundred thousand dollar savings. That's part of it, and I'm gonna let these folks speak in just a second of why we would want to do this. The other part is, uh, that it's, uh, it's a step forward. It's a step into the future. Regionalization is, is favored. It solves a lot of, uh, headaches for us relative to staffing. And the folks that will be making a little bit more money when they go over there, because we'll be using uh, the, the rate that Green had, and that's what's projected in these cost estimates. But we're gonna have a better product. Uh, and, um, so we have, and, and there's no, there will be no difference in the service. We are, it will still be a primary, uh, PSAP. And, uh, and by that, we mean when, right now, when somebody calls nine-one-one, it goes to our dispatch, and if it's police, it's dispatched to police. If it's fire, it's dispatched to fire. That will not change. Uh, and there are, it, it, with the county program, for instance, uh, when you call for, uh, if, when you call, oh, the city of Green's a perfect example. If you call Green's dispatch and it's fire, the call goes right to fire. But if it goes, if it's police, it has to go to Green, then it has to go to Summit County, then to the police, and there's that extra step in there. Uh, and, uh, and this, this process, there's no extra step. Uh, so, so we don't lose anything in terms of time. Um, so it's a better product, and we're gonna save some more money, and it's, and in the long run, it's really a, a good big picture for us. Uh, having said that, we, I, we have asked, um, Chief Davidson, Chief Leslie, uh, and, uh, Michelle Matheny, uh, to, uh, weigh in and give you their thoughts, uh, as to what they think about the general idea, and are they in favor of this process? And, uh, Steve, you've been on the front line on a lot of this stuff. Maybe, um, maybe you can go first, if you don't mind, and share with council your thoughts.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, we've been, actually, we've been trying to form something for over ten years now. The idea that, uh, we saw it coming down the pipe from the state. Like you said, Mayor, you know, they, they've been pushing for consolidation. That's been years they've been pushing for that consolidation. I think this is a, a positive step for us in consolidation. While it's not consolidating on a county level, at least not at this point, it is consolidating with Green. That's gonna help us out, like you said, you know, and, and like it seems, you know, that's gonna help us out in our, in our cost, keeping our costs down, not only at least initially now, but operating costs. I mean, the, the way this is set up, it's a split cost, you know, we're, we're covering forty-one percent, they're covering fifty-one percent. And that's based off of a number of factors, but, um, capital improvement costs down the road will be split. All those costs will be split. We're not gonna see those costs absorb, have to absorb those costs with the city just by ourselves. So, that's, that's a huge thing. On the fire end of it, the, the biggest point that, that comes from this is, is that, that consolidation of, of radio dispatch services for the area departments, uh, you know, consolidating Green and Coventry and New Franklin, uh, on the fire end of it, into one dispatch is huge. I mean, we use the, the city is, is split up into six different zones that we use for mutual aid. Coventry and Green, um, in that first zone, or in that first box for those zones, Coventry and Green are in four of those zones. So, that means that once we go to a joint dispatch, those Coventry and Green can be dispatched immediately. There would be no, no delay whatsoever. Now, as it sits, we have a delay because our dispatch center has to call Green, call Central, and then they have to repeat all the information, and then it has to be put out and toned out to them. The idea with the joint dispatch will be that, that we can all be toned out at the same time, which is going to save time, especially on those huge, those large callouts, like house fires and multiple calls, accidents, things like that. So, I, I mean, from the fire aspect, it, it's, it's a huge benefit. I mean, we're gonna see a cost savings for one. And then the other part is, we're gonna see a, a, a big increase in, in the overall service. Just for that simple fact that we're all housed under one, in one communication center. So, that'll, that'll be great. And I'm really happy to see this moving along as it is.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Chief Davidson, uh, you wanna weigh in and, and your thoughts relative to, uh, the police department?
Yeah, I agree with both, uh, you, Mayor, and, uh, Chief Leslie on, on all the aspects that you guys went over. One of the things with us handling dispatch here over on, on the police side is, back in the day, we only needed one dispatcher to, to handle, um, just the city. Okay, once the state mandated EMD, um, it's a mandate of two dispatchers at all times. That's where the, the cost has really gotten out of hand with us on our end because we have to have two dispatchers in there at all times, and we don't have the dispatchers that, we don't have enough dispatchers at, at this point to cover all that. So, the overtime was kind of out of control. So, I think that's the big thing on our end is that, the, uh, the overtime, uh, for, and for the dispatchers and having two dispatchers in there. And I do agree, you know, it's gonna be a cost savings down the road. It's gonna be more dispatchers, less overtime. When we, when we, uh, purchase equipment, we're gonna split the equipment cost. Just like the mayor said, the, the, uh, the county's going to the CAD system. Um, that CAD system was a three-point-two-million-dollar CAD system. And we're gonna be able to buy in on that CAD system for a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, which I think is, is a pretty good deal um, with a three-point-nine, or three-point-two-million-dollar cost. And that's gonna give us a lot more things on our end with, on the police end is, is because that CAD system's gonna be able to, um, pinpoint where all our crews are at. The dispatchers are gonna be able to look up on the screen and see where they're at, get the closest, uh, car, and be able to send that to the, to the, when the call comes in, you know, they'll, they'll send the closest car to the call. So, it'll be, it'll be time efficient, too. Um, and like I said, buying power for the future, um, staffing, um, and then, and, and like Steve said, um, when it comes to mutual aid, and when we only had one dispatcher in there, a lot of times dispatch wasn't that busy. But when, when a big incident goes down, you really need two or three dispatchers in there to make sure that they get all the equipment that they need, and all the police need to get to where they're at. So, yeah, I'm excited about this also, and think that, uh, it could be a good move. It's, it's, it's the future. And I think that it would be, it would be a good thing for the city.
All right. Thank you, Dan. And Michelle Matheny, as you probably know, is, uh, our dispatch supervisor, and, uh, Michelle, do you mind weighing in and your thoughts from the dispatch, uh, department's perspective?
No, I don't. I don't mind at all. I feel the same way as far as all the items that have been brought up to this point. There will be future equipment costs, because we're still in the process of conforming to this next-generation nine-one-one that the state keeps talking about. So, down the road, we are going to end up having live video streams of different incidents that are happening, and that's still forthcoming. So, obviously, that cost would be a shared cost once we went to this COG versus us having to take it on ourselves. The other thing to consider is that grants, they tend to be approved if there's regionalization involved versus if a city tries to do anything on their own, grants tend to be denied when that happens. So, you know, there's, there's several benefits, like they've already mentioned. Staffing being probably the largest one, in my opinion. Dispatch is traditionally a high turnover rate position. It's hard to keep really good people. So, the, the thought of going with Green, where they've got several people on their staff that have also been there for a long time, it's exciting. Get some stability.
All right. Please, go ahead. Open up the questions.
Yeah, as far as now, and if this all happens, then how many dispatchers will be there at one time?
There would be three on duty all the time.
Okay, thank you.
So, with the, um, I have so many questions, I don't know where to start, but staff-wise, is everyone from New Franklin going to have a position with this?
The way it's, uh, what's anticipated, and in, in some ways, and we've looked at a lot of models. Uh, and the one, the most recent one we looked at was, um, the, uh, the one that they're trying to form in Summit County, that they are gonna form in Summit County. Uh, I'm looking, I, I can't remember what the, what it's called, the, uh, SSD call. Anyway, the, the, the idea at this point in time, uh, Mr. Federman, is that this will be a separate political entity. The, uh, the dispatch departments from Green and from New Franklin will disband. Uh, the, um, job openings will be posted. We're working with a consultant who was involved, uh, with Swisscom for a number of years, all the way back to the formation. And the experience that we're hearing is that in these kind of situations, uh, some folks decide they want to go over there, some don't. Uh, some just decided to retire, but the, it'll be open application from Green and from New Franklin. In terms of the number of positions, full-time and part-time, it comes very close to being, positions available if we look at all those numbers, but we don't know exactly who's gonna want to come and who isn't gonna come. And, um, and quite frankly, uh, we'll, it, it'll be open in the sense of, uh, anyone could apply. So, uh, I know that the intention is that anyone who is hired either from Green or from New Franklin uh, would take their, uh, service credit with them. But, but it's, it's not structured, at least at this point, to guarantee a position for uh, everybody from, uh, both departments, from each individual. And, um, that's, um, there, there's pros and cons to that. Uh, and you can, you can probably imagine that, uh, in terms of, um, talentability and those kind of things.
The revenue listed from Coventry and Lake More, why is that so significantly lower than what our contribution would be? I'm assuming staffing, because the, they're not, we weren't bringing over staff from there, I would assume?
No, no, all we're doing, and that's what they're paying Green right now. So, they subcontract with, that's what they pay to Green on a contract basis. Uh, to do their, uh, fire, both of them, uh, their police are done through Summit County. So, that's a contract they have with Green, and, uh, we anticipate that they would, uh, uh, that they would continue that contract with, uh, with the COG.
Okay. The, um, I, be honest with you, I have a problem with the, the, and it, I mean, it's good for us, the forty percent, the forty-one percent, uh, that we would be responsible for. My issue is, if I go in with someone and buy a vacation home, and I say, I'm, I can pay forty percent, they'll pay fifty, at some point, they're gonna say, no, that's, that's more my vacation home than yours. And so, that, that gives me a bit of concern of, of, uh, will Green just, you know, steamroll us and say, no, this is the way it's gonna be. We have a bigger, uh, share in this.
You know, and, and that, that brings up two points, but first of all, the way, uh, the way the agreement is drafted, uh, and that, uh, Exhibit A provides that the, uh, let me see what it says. That the, uh, there'll be a government, there'll be a board, and on the board will be the, uh, chief executive officers of each city, and each of the cities will have one vote. So, going in, it's a, you know, it's, now, one of the things we're gonna be talking about is dispute resolution, and that's gonna have to be added into the, into the bylaws. If you have a dispute, right, you know, how's that gonna be resolved? There, there's plenty of, uh, you know, there's plenty of, plenty of, of, uh, formats that you can insert for dispute resolution. Uh, but it, it's, it's going in with an equal vote, and that's similar to the, uh, Summit County COG. One vote per municipality, no matter how big you are. Uh, they're doing business that way. The, uh, in terms of, um, one of the reasons there has been resistance to going in with Summit County, and, and among others, and one is the fact that they, they're not, they're not gonna be up and running for at least two years. Uh, but when I talk to these chiefs, and we've had meetings with, with the chiefs, not just the chiefs that are on the board here, but also from Green, and we had a joint meeting with Springfield and Mogadore and, um, Coventry, um, and, uh, Clinton. Uh, and there's, generally, what I hear all the time is everybody's afraid of, of, uh, putting all our eggs in a county basket for the reason that you mentioned. Uh, that, uh, that you lose your identity and you lose your voice. But, uh, but the way this is set up, it'd be a one vote per city.
Okay. And now, you, you brought up the appointed. Uh, so that brings up my question of who's being appointed and who's doing the appointing.
Yes, the, uh, I mean, for that, it would be the, uh, it'd be the mayor of each city. Would be on the, would constitute the, the governing board of the COG. So, as of right now, it'd be a two-person board. Now, going down the road, if another city comes in and wants to buy in as opposed to contract, they'd come on the board as well.
And, uh, I had, I had a nice conversation with, uh, Fire Chief at Springfield. And, uh, he was saying, and I think you had mentioned it, so I think it's already covered, but I just want to make sure to make sure we have our own channels for EMS, fire, uh, and police. And I think you guys had already touched on that, that that is gonna be the case.
Steve or Dan, you wanna answer that one?
Yes, our cha, our channels wouldn't change at all. We'd be on the same, our same channels.
All right.
Right, if, if I can, uh, radio channels, we're actually looking at, we would be, uh, we would have a common comm channel or dispatch channel, and then, uh, like they currently do, we would have our own operations channel then from then. So, we would be dispatched on that, that comm channel or that dispatch channel, and then we would move to our operations. But, uh, on the larger incidents, we all move to a common channel, a MAC channel, a mutual aid channel from the county. So, yeah, so day-to-day operations, we could, we would run, other than the alert channel, would be run on our ops channel.
All right. Thank you. So, the city of Green, what is their opinion? I, I listened to, and I watched their meeting from the, from last week, and I didn't hear them discuss any of it. And, uh, so I was just curious as to if you knew what their position was on this.
I don't know what, I, I don't know what their council's position is. I know that, uh, Jeff Funey, who's their chief, briefed them on it, um, the, uh, the meeting before they actually introduced it. Uh, and the feedback from him was that there didn't seem to be, um, there was no pushback. And, uh, they went through the first reading. I didn't watch the meeting, but I, I was advised that, uh, you know, I don't know how it, you know, that there wasn't any, didn't appear to be any deep resistance. I, I think that, uh, I can't speak for them. I, I, I was, a big part of this was the mayor being on board. Uh, and, uh, you know, we talked about this. We had legislation on this back in two thousand eighteen. And that legislation was withdrawn for a variety of reasons. Um, that PSAP thing was coming too fast. We couldn't get it together in time, et cetera. So, their, their city administration, we've had a lot of hours of discussions on this. And, uh, and, so I know their administration is on board with this. What really, what kind of drove this through this year was, you know, the idea was discussed. We looked at it. We had legislation. It didn't happen, okay. Meanwhile, you know, we upgraded our, to be stay a primary PSAP, uh, and I think that was a good move. And, uh, and, um, but as time went on, you know, we, we hit those same kind of problems, finance, staffing, et cetera. Um, ironically, it was Springfield who reached out to everybody through the fire chiefs. Uh, gosh, I guess it was last fall, Steve. I'm trying to think. And we went over to Springfield because Springfield said, hey, why don't we do something regional out here for dispatch? And they were deciding what they were gonna do. So, Springfield was there, and Lake More was there, Coventry was there, Mogadore, Green, uh, us. Uh, and, uh, they said, well, why don't we talk about putting a COG together? So, we started that conversation. The meetings moved over to Green. Um, while those were going on, Springfield made a decision on their own to go over to Swisscom. So, they were out of the picture. But by that time, and then, and then, at the same time, Summit County was starting theirs, was, was moving on theirs, and they were doing their consulting on that and coming up with their opinions. So, we, we had the opportunity to weigh this in a, in a variety, as did Green, uh, in a, in a variety of different formats. And we had a lot of discussions about it, and those discussions were, were with the, the frontline guys. The, the, the police chiefs, the fire chiefs, you know, not, not the mayors necessarily, but the mayor sitting in. So, what, what you see now is the culmination of all those discussions. Uh, and, uh, to the point where Green's administration and their fire chief and New Franklin's administration and their police and fire chief and dispatch chief all said, this is, this is the best bet for us. So, that's was sort of the evolution of it. So, to the extent that, that Green City Council will follow the recommendation of the mayor, I don't know the answer to that. We, I haven't heard any, any serious, uh, opposition, but you, you never know.
Okay. But, I mean, it doesn't sound, obviously, it's, it's something that's probably needed, but the, um, the staffing is, that's a showstopper for me. I, I don't want to see any of our dispatchers. I mean, if, if all of them can't go, well, then that's a cost savings for us immediately here. I mean, if that could be here, I'd just cut the staff, so. I don't know. I, that's just, that bothers me. But I'll let someone else go now.
Do any other members of the committee have any comments?
Uh, I have a couple. And, you know, overall, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. I think, I think it will, um, work out really well for everybody, but, but I have some, some concerns and some questions. With the, the equipment that we currently have within our building, does that all move to the new location? Yes.
Yeah, it does. Somebody want to? I don't know who's best to answer that. You wanna, you wanna address, Steve, you wanna handle that one or Michelle?
Yeah, I, I'll just, I'll speak on it, and, and Dan, if you have anything to add after that, that's fine, but, um, yes, we have two councils right now. Green has, we have two coun, councils.
So, all the equipment is moving out of New Franklin?
Yes. Yes, it will move over to Green to, at this point there, we're looking at their central fire station. They already have their dispatch located there. They have three positions currently. We're looking at setting up four and keeping the, the fifth, which is the, the, this, the second one coming from us as a reserve. So, we will have four active, um, councils or, you know, positions, as they call it.
You are. You're here twice.
I was, I was, uh,
So, yes, the, the, the short answer is yes, the equipment will move over to Green.
Okay. And then, we currently- Okay. And then we currently with our dispatch, there's somebody in the building twenty-four hours a day. Will that now change?
I expect it will. We I expect what we and we're starting to talk about that. We will at a minimum, man that office during regular business hours for walk-ups. And when we get off business hours, likely it'll be a call box situation. We don't have that much come in after, you know, in the evening hours. Sometimes people need tow releases. They'll be able to come up to Green to get that instead of coming here. We'd have an intercom situation where if somebody walked up to the building and they hit the intercom, it's gonna go to dispatch. So they'll have a person to talk to. But because the police officers come and go, there won't always be somebody in the building.
Okay. So if we move all of our equipment and we go through this process, and it's a two-year contract, I guess, that that will each be signing, what happens if after two years, Green decides, you know what, we don't want to do this anymore. We want to go somewhere else? Where does that leave us?
Well, we here's the thing, it's there, they would have to, I get, you know, that we they would be resigning from that council of governments. And there's gonna have to be in the agreement, you know, some some exit provisions. You know, what happens to your buy-in and your buy-out, et cetera. So there's certainly there's certainly that risk. And Jim, I would tell you, while you never anticipate that happening, what I see coming down the road, you know, they say two years from now, Summit Counties will be up and running, which probably means, you know, in government time, three or four years. But they'll be a lot closer than they are today. So if we get this formed and up and running by January, February, March of next year, they think they're gonna be operational in Summit County by the fall of 2022. So if, in fact, for some reason, this fell apart, I would I would expect our next move would be to go join with them. What what I'm actually envisioning down the road is that these dispatch centers like to have a redundancy center, a center where if the tornado hits up there in Talmage where they are, where can they go immediately and have some stations and dispatch? And that's what the really the bigger regional dispatch centers have, those redundancy centers. And what I envision down the road is that theirs is gonna be up in in Talmage. So that eventually that'll be the north. And eventually, I would see us as being the south down here. So, you know, I think that so we would have that option at a minimum to tie in unless, you know, you know, if we could always, of course, try to go back to doing it ourselves, but I hope we never have to do that.
Man, excuse me, if I could, if I could just say something to address that. The other thing to to remember with this, too, is with the cog, yes, our equipment will go to Green, but our equipment will no longer be owned by us. Likewise, Green's equipment will no longer be owned by them. It's owned by the cog. So it's a it's a fifty-fifty split, so to speak. So they have as much skin in the game as we do. In fact, probably more. So it it would not be very easy for them to just say in two years that they wanted to back out to this. And I I think they understand that. And I I don't feel that I don't feel we would be moving forward if if that was their or, you know, that was even an intent of theirs. Did everybody freeze or just Mr. Cots?
Hey, Andy, I want to, Mr. Fetterman, I want to go back one more reason, one more to address one of your concerns, and it's a legitimate concern. I I understand it in terms of trying to protect employees. To to, well, I mean, what else would I want to be except perfectly honest? I don't know about Green staff. And let me let me just let me just express it that way. Okay? I don't know about their staff up there. I don't, you know, I don't know if they're the best and the brightest. Okay? And it it very well may be that that if you're taking fourteen and shrinking it to twelve, you know, it's conceivable that, you know, that maybe there's somebody that it's not in the public's best interest to continue in that position. Maybe there's somebody better. That's a hard call. I get that. And I'm I'm I don't mean to be disloyal. I'm just being honest with you. So the intention is to to open those two applications. Maybe it'll be a perfect fit. But if not, I think the duty that we're gonna have is to put the best people in those, you know, in those stations, three at a time, that we can to serve the public and and go for that quality. Now, there's also gonna be part-time positions as well. So it would, you know, we anticipate there'd be a spot for everybody, whether there's gonna be the full-time spot for everybody. And then there's other issues, too, when we talk about people moving. You know, there could be people seniority-wise that are working day shifts now, and and they would have to work night shifts, and they're saying, I'm not gonna work a night shift. So I'd be surprised if we had across the board, you know, if if everybody applied. But but I just want to be, you know, forthright with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay. I feel like I'm, you know, there's a vogue going on here or whatnot. Okay. So on the numbers that the breakdown to give us our fifty-nine percent and forty-one percent, this is just based on fire, correct?
No. Let me see that. No, it was by it was we included everything on there, police and fire. I'm right about that. Correct, Steve?
Yes, yes, you are mayor.
Okay. Yeah, the paper we have that I have says average call duration for fire dispatch services. Didn't say anything, but there's additional costs. Would there be additional costs? For police?
Oh, that first pace up there, that that one, there, there, these were the three criteria. These are three of the criteria that are commonly used for a determinant for for this type of a determination as far as a ratio. Call volume duration is one of them, populations, the other square mileage. So on the call volume duration, when they were trying to figure that assign a time for those, that's what they talked about. They did an average call for the fire dispatch services. So that's, but it did also include the police. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't I didn't get your next question.
No, I was just, is is so are there additional costs to us for police dispatch?
No.
Or, okay.
No.
All right. So on the this thing, whatever it's called, I can't see it.
All right. Oh, yeah, the cost estimate. Yeah.
Yes, yes, the cost estimate. On the top, it says salary administration, a hundred thousand dollars. Is that you?
No, that'd be nice. I think I could use a raise, but I don't think I'm gonna get one. The, no, that's when we said administration, that's gonna be for the dispatch manager slash fiscal officer, and that's still to be determined. You know, who's gonna do the payroll, who's gonna do the the purchase orders and the audits and and so on. On the on the contracted cost, contracted services, you see two hundred and twenty-three thousand. And when you go to the breakdown on that, there's fifty thousand on there for law, finance and HR. We don't think the law is gonna be significant. But the so we basically got a hundred and fifty thousand for the dispatch manager and the finance, and that's probably high. The the Summit County model, which was to, they were gonna, they they hoped to have seven, eight cities involved in that thing and thirty or forty dispatchers. And they had budgeted somewhere around seventy-eight thousand for their dispatch manager. So we think that that cost is probably gonna be around fifty or sixty. Depends on whether he's an employee or a contract person. And then with the finance, so basically, short story is, we got about a hundred and fifty thousand estimated for that. We don't think we'll that will fill that. We think that dispatch manager will probably be either fifty, fifty-five thousand on a contract or the same amount on a salary, but then you add some benefits. So it'd probably go up to about seventy.
Okay. All right. And and then I was struck by, as you, the contract services that you mentioned, at two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, when, on average, we've been spending about four thousand dollars in New Franklin for contracted services under dispatch.
Ah, I'm I'm not sure what's when you say that, and I'm not sure what you're referring to on the four thousand.
Under under our expense account for dispatching twenty-eight oh one under contractual, looking at the past six years, it's been averaging approximately forty-five thousand dollars.
There's, yeah, there's some, there's, there's some expenses being paid from other accounts. I'm sure Dan and Susan could point that out. For instance, the leads, we pay for the leads, and we're gonna have to keep paying for the leads. We pay for these positions now at fifteen hundred a month for our two with AT&amp;T. Susan, we just talked about that one, didn't we? So we got we got three thousand a month just on our on the AT&amp;T stations. So there's there's, there are, there are a number of other contracted services we're paying for, Jim, that aren't in that line item. I can't tell you right now what line items they're in. But
All right.
And and keep it, and and again, this is consistent with trying to, they wanted to miss on the high end on this. But
Well, I understand.
But yeah, a big difference between four thousand and two twenty-three. I get it.
Like Sundance.
I'm sorry?
Sundance, we we our CAD system is a lot more than that, just four thousand. It's like we pay like eleven thousand just for a CAD system. Let's do Sundance.
Yeah. So, yeah, for example, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that is, the way it is right now, that the cost for the CAD and everything gets split. And it's not, doesn't just come out of dispatch where in the cog, it will just come out of the cog, all of it.
Okay. So the last few years, our dispatch, based on, again, based on our our expense account report per year, going back to 2013, the the total cost in dispatch has been around three hundred thousand dollars approximately, between three and four hundred thousand dollars. And this last year, 2019, we saw a pretty large jump because we increased the number of dispatchers. So that increased our our payroll by about eighty-six thousand. And then we had some equipment costs in there of an additional fifty thousand. But even with that, we're still coming under, coming, we're paying now coming in less than what we're projected to pay at the five hundred seventeen thousand.
Ah, I I'm I'm not sure that's accurate. I'd have to look at what numbers you're looking at and see if there's any that you're missing. And you got a thought on that, Susan, or you got?
Um, I don't have, I don't have a report in front of me. However, I do know that our costs have been increasing yearly. They're gonna increase again this year because of just what we said originally, the AT&amp;T thirteen thousand two hundred right off the bat, and then three thousand a month for that alone. So and and we've had some massive overtime that that has kicked in even this year. So because of spots that we had to fill. So it's just continuing to rise. I mean, as as Jim said at the beginning, it was relatively, you know, three hundred, around the three hundred thousand mark, but it hasn't, it's not gonna be there again.
And those costs are also gonna be in the in the cog, an increase in the cost. But I'm just looking at at the numbers that I have available to me that that I can see where, you know, the difference is about ninety thousand dollars. You know, from 2019 to the projected five hundred seventeen thousand.
Yeah, I would say this, and and I, again, I'd have to compare numbers with you. If it was all, if it was only about saving the money, but it's not. And I I know you can appreciate that. The the bigger issue for us, well, as big an issue is the staffing. The staffing now and the staffing going forward. And the amount of overtime that we've we've had to incur. One of the reasons if we're, you know, if there's an increase, and I can tell you, you know, is that, you know, we have the lowest pay scale in, I don't know if it's in Ohio, but it's certainly in any neighboring area, which is why oftentimes we lose these dispatchers. So you know, and which makes it tough for us to to retain, you know, to hire and then to keep. And and that's been an ongoing problem. So this would give us some a lot of stability. And Green's a nice place to partner, in my view, and not just for now, but for the future. You know, I think, again, we know regionalization is the answer and we we could do a lot worse than a partner like Green. So it's it's not strictly a dollars and cents thing.
Mr. Mayor, I certainly agree with you on that. And and I agree with with our chiefs and and our dispatch supervisor that that this probably makes a lot of sense for us to do it. And and partnering with Green is is our best option. I I agree with that also. I'm just, I just want to make sure we're looking at our numbers correctly when we're you know, comparing or or covering up with a savings number that's based on appropriations and not necessarily actual costs. And so that's that's what I want to look at and compare and make sure, again, that we're, you know, comparing apples to apples as much as possible.
That's fair.
Any other questions? Judy, do you have your question?
Yes. Paul, you mentioned the staff, and everybody is going to have to hire in, basically, for a new position. They can, there'll be new applications. You also mentioned something about the people that have service. They would be able to transfer that service if they are hired for the
Yes.
Dispatch.
Yeah, that's correct. And that's that's the understanding. That's what we've talked about with Green, and and we have a mutual understanding that that would be the case. It would be the only fair thing to do. If they come from Green or from New Franklin, they would take their service with them for seniority and vacation. I'm sorry?
You mentioned something about training. Right now, the people that are hired, the dispatchers from Green.
Yes.
What are they asked to already have on their resume that our employees are not? I just want to see if this would be a level playing field, that our employees are trained as well as the ones at Green.
Yeah, I don't, Judy, I can't tell you. I I don't know that there's any distinctive difference in terms of their skill sets or qualifications. There's gonna be a learning curve for Green because they haven't done police. And so we're gonna have some training, you know, in some senses, they're gonna have to catch up a little bit with our people because we've done police and fire and they haven't. So, you know, I think there'd be some advantage in terms of hiring for the the ones that have that have done both. But I'm not aware of any licensing or specific qualifications that would give the folks from Green any any advantage over the the folks here in New Franklin for positions.
Maybe Michelle can help us with that. Are you still there, Michelle?
I am here. We would all have the same EMD qualifications going into it, where we can all give the medical instructions. That's the same across the board. The difference between the two departments is all of our dispatchers are LEED certified, where none of Green's dispatchers at this point have that certification because they don't dispatch for police.
All right, great. Thank you, Michelle. I hope that helps you out, Judy.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, my next question is this, who's going to be looking at the personnel to hire them? Who's going to decide that?
What we would anticipate is we'd hire the dispatch manager first. And we really haven't made a specific decision beyond that, Judy. I know the dispatch manager would probably be the primary person. But whether or not we'd involve the chiefs in that process, we really haven't discussed that specifically. I I'm sure at at a minimum, from a reference standpoint, there'd be that, you know, reference and recommendation. There there would be that. But what, you know, what, at least what's come out of the discussions we've had so far There, there would be that. But what, you know, what, at least what's come out of the discussions we've had so far is the, the person who's gonna uh, manage these people, you wanna let them hire, you know, be involved in the hiring uh, situation. Basically, not, not just hand him the employees and say, here's your staff. Uh, and uh, the, the individual we're talking to uh, is an individual who's had 30 years in uh, uh, safety forces. And been a, a, a chief and, and been involved with dispatch. Uh, and uh, you know, we, we think that person has a pretty good eye. So I think it's kinda like, you don't wanna pick the team and, you know, tell the manager, here's your team. Um, we wanna let uh, that, I anticipate that person would have a lot to do with the hiring, but there'd be plenty of input from the chiefs from both sides.
Thank you.
Is that it? Any other uh, questions or comments?
I just got something real quick. I mean, I got, I know we're talking about the uh, the cog in there, but I do got a question since we have Chief Leslie here. I just got a question on the uh, internet. Somebody says a great opportunity and great, you know, good job and all the hard work on the fire truck. But that new fire truck will be housed at our main station on Manchester Road, correct, Steve?
That is, yes, that's correct. Yeah.
We're gonna move the truck to uh, auxiliary station or?
Yeah, the front, the, 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 the Pierce that's currently our frontline engine at Station 1 will move down to Station 2 to the joint station.
Okay.
And then the new truck will be housed at, at, on Manchester Road at the main station.
Alright, thank you. I hope that answers your question, one of our viewers. So, alright, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor?
Yes.
Based on the comments and the questions and to the chiefs and to uh, any um, buddy that might have a comment. Has anything that this discussion brought up changed any of your minds? Or want to reflect even further on this decision moving forward?
Are you addressing that to, to me and the chiefs at this point or to council?
Ask questions and?
Yeah.
Has anything changed your mind? I'm, I just assume some of the questions that have been asked tonight were something that you was put into your consideration about the finances, about the hiring practice, about some of these issues that you've thought about. And that were, they were already in your consideration when you decided that we should move forward. But has anything been asked tonight that gives you pause or that you wanna reflect upon further before we move forward?
And no, that's a, that's a fair question. And, and I can tell you that there's, there's uh, been plenty of occasions when I had an opinion when we started the discussions and when we finished the discussions, I'm saying, ah, that's, you know, we need some time to think on this. Uh, and that's not to uh, diminish the quality of the questions that were asked. Uh, but um, we've, the, the short answer is no, Andrea. I, I'm, I'm um, I'm committed to this course. I think it's in the very best interest of the city. I think it's the future. Uh, I think it's the, in the best interest of our citizens. And, and that's really, of course, the biggest deal. Uh, it's uh, to ensure that we keep quality dispatch and that, and that we keep a one-call system. Uh, and that we've got um, talented staffing to answer that phone. Uh, and, and we've got the, the equipment that they need to do their job. This is the move. Uh, and I, and I don't see another. Uh, because we wait around a couple of years for Summit County. Swisscom unfortunately is on Sundance and they're not, you know, they're, they're gonna get, in my opinion, left behind on this countywide and statewide. Uh, and so the only other option is to keep doing what we're doing. Uh, and I, I know the expenses will come up in the, in the, but the staffing issues are not gonna go away. Uh, and uh, I, I just, so it, no, I, there's nothing that's changed my mind in this regard. I uh, I think this is the right move. If council feels like they need more time, you know, you can take it, you know, go to a fourth reading. You know, there, there's perhaps some value in, in letting Green know how you feel. And, and you know, if Green says no, well, it doesn't happen. Uh, so uh, but no, I, I, I'm, I'm still committed and ready to go forward on it. Um, Dan, Chief Davidson, Chief Leslie, uh, um, Michelle, um, any, uh, anything come up here that changed your, your mind or your commitment to this? Steve Leslie, how about Chief Leslie?
Yeah, i- if I could say, if you, I, if you remember at the beginning, I said, we've been working on trying to do this for over 10 years now. Um, I've seen a lot of different options, a lot of different variations come up. Uh, from going to Swisscom to going to the county to, to, to go and even to in the Stark County. And I have to say that this is the best, um, this is the, the best choice that we can make for the citizens of, of the city at this point. I, I mean, I, I, I don't see it ever getting any better than this. I mean, Green's a, a, a very good uh, group to, to partner with. Um, it still gives us a lot of our, our voice. I mean, it gives us a 50/50 voice in this versus a one voice in 18. Um, and, and you know, for us, costs aren't gonna, aren't, aren't gonna go down. I mean, um, you know, there's, there's things coming down the, the pipe from the state for, for for PSAPs that, that, that are gonna have to be purchased if we wanna remain a viable or remain, you know, receiving our own 911 calls. And, and this is a way for us to do that and, and share that cost, those costs with a, another entity. And it benefits them too. So um, no, I, I'm still a, 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 a very big supporter of this.
Chief Davidson?
Yeah, uh, I, I feel the same way as, as Chief Leslie does. Uh, I remember back in the day, cause I'm a dinosaur. When we, we brought dispatch in. And then the reason we brought dispatch in was for the personal touch. Um, because we were not getting the, the proper uh, you know, calls from the county. We were not, they were not handling our calls in a timely manner. So that's why how we ended up forming dispatch in, in, in the, in the city, in the township at the time. I think that if we don't go with, I think if we go back to the county way, we're gonna get swallowed up again and there's gonna be a lot of agencies. And I think that personal touch will be like it was back when I first started. So I, I, I do agree, this is the way to go.
Michelle?
I've been here for 23 years now, and we've been talking about consolidating for the majority of those years, clear back to when we were in the old building. We've been talking about this. And all the way up until this point, I have been against consolidating with anybody. And we started talking with Green a few years ago about this. This isn't something that just came up. This is something that's been in the works for quite some time. And this is the first time that I'm actually excited about the thought of consolidating with another agency. I truly believe that this is gonna be the best move for our city. I think you are gonna continue to get that personalized touch. And cost-wise, for sure, it's gonna be a benefit in the future because there will be more requirements coming. It's, it's inevitable.
Alright.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and it was just, my point was not that any questions or comments from council should be disregarded. In fact, I wanna regard them. I want Andy, I want Jim, I want the voices to be heard. And if there was any concern that was brought up by their comments or their, their remarks, I wanted to make sure that we're properly addressing that. Um, my concern was always the budget. It was those numbers. Because we've dealt with numbers before and we found out that we were in error. But like you said, we're close, the numbers are close. But what's primary of importance here is the safety and moving forward. We have to move forward. So I, I appreciate everybody's comments. Anything else from a committee or members of council?
I, I just, uh, real quick, wanna say again, thank you to Chief Leslie, uh, Chief Davidson and uh, Supervisor Michelle for coming and, and taking time out of their day today to, to spend time with us and, and help us through this process. It's, you, you are a benefit today. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much. And our committee will close at 7:02.
And I wanna thank Andy because, I wanna, Councilman Fetterman, because originally I just had Steve and Dan come in and I said, Dan can speak for Michelle. And uh, Councilman Fetterman brought up that it'd be good to have somebody from dispatch and I'm so glad you did. Uh, and uh, Michelle, I appreciate you being here. So if it's okay with council, we'll let them, we'll let them uh, sign off.
Yes, please. Um, is Dave Stock back?
Yeah, I'm back. Can you guys hear me?
Alright, Michelle and Dan and uh, Steve, you guys can sign off and we'll see you tomorrow.
Thank, thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Alright, luckily I had my IT person here to get me back online here. So, we can go ahead and uh, move into finance. Jim, you got some stuff for us tonight? Finance, Jim?
Okay, uh, we will open finance committee at 7:06. And we will start out with Resolution 20R47. All members are present. A resolution authorizing a transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district and dispatch funds and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. This is our uh, standard transfer. We'll be transferring uh, from the general fund to the police district fund, $150,000. And $150,000 will be transferred from the general fund to the dispatch fund. Any questions concerned? We'll ask the wave to three on that one and we'll move on to Resolution 20R48. A resolution authorizing appropriations to the 2020 annual operating appropriation budget and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And this is for the Central Road resurfacing project and the amount of 4,065 dollars and 50 cents. This project was done years ago.
No. Um, this is basically um, for the, now this fund is for only the pass-through. Basically, the ODOT payments that we have to include in our financial um, pa- paperwork. It's not actual money that's going through. So um, these were the last two bills from CTL Engineering that ODOT paid. That we have to show on our books. So we needed the appropriations to that, basically show that, that it, that pass-through money on our books. So that's all that is.
Okay. Questions, anyone? We'll ask the wave to three on that. Resolution 20R49, a resolution accepting amounts and rates as determined by the Summit County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Summit County Fiscal Officer and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. This is something we do every, every year at this time uh, for Summit County and uh, Susan, are these numbers pretty accurate as far as money that we'll see coming in?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna see an increase of over $700,000 over last year?
Right, I'm looking at it right now. Uh, yeah, I don't have last year's in front of me, but it looks like there will be some increase. But, but bear in mind, these Summit County's doing the same thing that we are doing. It's basically going with their normal projections. Um, we don't know that if there will be any reductions due to any of the, you know, COVID uh, COVID restrictions that have been, you know, on people. But um, yeah, this is, these are the numbers that they actually come up with for the inside and outside millage and the levies.
So, so these are property taxes. So it's based on property, not necessarily employment or anything. So the numbers, as you said before, the number should be pretty current. So last year, we were looking at about 3.4 million. And this year is coming in at 4.1 plus million. So an, an increase in funds of uh, 729,000 dollars.
And I suppose to some degree, that depends on collections.
Yes.
Well, sure.
That's where the wild card is gonna be this year. Um, literally, you know, with the mortgage defaults, et cetera. But we'll see, you know, we're hopeful.
Okay. Questions? Again, this is a, something that Summit County requires and that we do every year uh, in the middle of September. So we'll ask the wave to three on this. And we will close our meeting. Figured out how to tell time. No, I didn't. We will close our meeting at 7:10.
Thanks, Jim. Alrighty, anybody else have anything for their committees they'd like to discuss?
Yes, one thing, Dave. Dave?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor, you talked about, you know, needing to, a few things with this agreement. Are those just things you'll button up if we approve it tonight, like arbitration, mediation, the resolution of some issues? Should we wait and see what Green does? Or do you wanna uh, go forward with the confidence that you can resolve some of these outstanding questions? And contractual provisions that need to be implemented?
Yeah, those are, you know, those will be bylaws issues. So I'm confident we're gonna be able to work those out. Yeah. We've had preliminary discussions on it. I think we gotta, we're like-minded on it. And it's, it's a, it's a cordial conversation. So I'm confident we'll be able to work those things out.
Just wanted to make sure you were comfortable with the, with us moving to forward tonight in our meeting.
I am.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, would there be anything that came down that, you know, we, we agree upon this tonight and pass it, and then you just come to some point where you just can't make an agreement? Or, I mean, and then if Green don't pass it, then it's all null and void anyhow, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. So they have to pass. But if they pass it, then, you know, we would, we'd both be authorized to execute uh, the Exhibit A to form the cog and Exhibit B to form the uh, the joint dispatch. So i- if we pass it and Green passes it, we're, that, that, that's the direction we're going.
Okay, but I, I say, say they, we both pass and you just get to a point where you just can't work something out. We're, what, what happens at that point? If, I mean, I don't.
No, I hear what you're saying. Uh, you know, I don't think either, you know, there probably would be some recourse. I don't, I can't imagine either community trying to hold a gun to the head of the other community to the other way. But we're gonna, we're gonna take you to court, you know, you guys agreed to do this. I mean, if, if things fell apart between the formation of, of the council of governments and the formation of the dispatch. What I would, I would fully expect we'd both have to, we'd just have to walk away. Uh, I can't imagine us trying to force Green to do it. And uh, I can't imagine Green trying to force us to do it.
Alright. Thank you. Alright, anything else? Alright, I'm gonna call to order the City of New Franklin Council meeting at 7:12. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Get a roll call, please.
Mr. Cotts? Mr. Cotts?
Here.
Mr. Hargit?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Hawke?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here. Alright, thank you. Like to make a mo- motion to approve the minutes from the rare scheduled meeting of September 2nd, 2020.
Second.
First and second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yeah, he is.
Alright. Whoa. I'd like to make a motion to approve the financials for August 2020, subject to audit.
Second.
First and second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Alright, that passes seven to zero. Alright, we hit our public comments. Katie, I addressed the one already, of course. Just haven't seen anything else. You?
Another one about.
Another one about the trick or treat announcement. Do you want to wait until later after the mayor's report or read it now?
You can read it. I don't see that one.
From Amanda?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
This says, I just.
I see it. Okay.
Do you want to go ahead and read it then, Dave?
No, go ahead. You're good, Katie. Thanks.
All right, I just want to drop in and thank you for the trick or treat communication. The Facebook messages from the mayor are wonderful.
Oh, ain't that nice? They are nice, Paul. That is, we appreciate that.
We're, we're having fun with it. Hey, you guys urged it and that was a great thing. It's, it's been a good thing. But that came out of suggestions from this panel.
So that worked out real nice. All right, that's all I see at this point.
Yeah.
If anything else comes, we'll catch it at the end. All right, again, we have three first readings and we have one third reading. Get started with our first readings, resolution number 20-R-47, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district and dispatch funds. And declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to wave to three readings on resolution 20R47.
Second.
First, second, roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution 20R47.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Right, that passes seven to zero. We'll move to resolution number 20-R-48, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing additional appropriations to the 2020 annual operating appropriation budget. And declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to wave to three readings on 20R48.
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yeah.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution 20R48.
Second.
Got a first and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mrs. No- Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We'll move to resolution number 20-R-49, Kelly.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Summit County Budget Commission. And authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Summit County Fiscal Officer. And declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution has been assigned to the finance committee. We move to wave to three readings on 20R49.
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
All right.
We move to adopt resolution 20R49.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We have no second readings, but we have third reading of ordinance number 20-O-03, Kelly.
An ordinance authorizing the city of New Franklin to enter into agreements with the city of Green. To create a regional council of governments for the purpose of sharing services. And to create a shared public safety dispatch center and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage. I can't think of anything more critical to the effective administration of our government. Than a state of the art dispatch center. That's operated by effective and appropriate personnel. Having had firsthand experience with the dispatch center that has at times, you have to rise to these challenges. And having our, our chief of police, the chief of the fire department, our mayor, the dispatch supervisor. Tell us that for 10 years plus, they've been wanting to implement these changes. I move that we adopt this legislation. And move forward with improving the services to the citizens of New Franklin.
Second.
Very good. Any comments, questions? Can everybody hear me?
I, yeah.
Okay. I was locking up a little bit.
Me too.
Everybody good? Very well said, Andrea. That was nice. Roll call then.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
No for me.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes, thank you.
All right, that passes six to one. All right, we're going to, no pending legislation, so we'll move into the mayor's report.
Uh, thank you and, yeah, I'll begin by, no matter what you did. You gave it, I, I think a thorough discussion, a thorough review and I, I respect all the points of view that were, that were raised. I appreciate the, the confidence you have, which I have as well, in our chiefs. Uh, and, and our dispatch supervisor and, and I will. Uh, I mean, it's passed, but I'm just going to, I'll say. Um, I've, I've been here for all those years. They had those discussions and I can remember when there was an, an attempt to uh, move the dispatch to the sheriff's department and there was a big meeting at, um, down at, um, oh, on Manchester Road on, uh, uh, the club down there and it was very heated. So there's a lot of strong feelings when it comes to dispatch. Uh, so I just really just want to reassure everybody that's listening and everybody that I'm looking at right now. And I know you guys know this, but I, I take it extremely seriously because it is just that serious. Um, my family has depended life or death on that phone call. Uh, and yours have too. And we will in the future. So, uh, this is the best product that we can give our people. Uh, and it's the best option we've had in, in all the years that I've had a chance to look at them as well. So I appreciate that confidence and I can tell you that we will do everything we can at our end to make sure that we deliver that product, uh, and the quality that, that, that everyone expects. Okay, let's see, paving, sooner or later they're going to pave South Main Street. Uh, there were, uh, we, we're not the only ones who get caught in snafu sometimes. The, the paving contractor had some forms that ODOT required filled out and they hadn't been filled out and that's what pushed it. The weather pushed it back for a minute and then the forms pushed it back for another minute. And now it, they are scheduled to start on September 21st. Um, so it'll be next Tuesday, next Monday. So hopefully that happens and we expect it to and, and we're hoping that it's going to be about a two week project. Uh, so as has been said before, there'll be a lane open throughout, but stay out of that area if you can and do yourself a favor. Um, yes, trick or treat. Uh, that's, a lot of people have asked and we did put something on there and, and Summit County Public Health, Donna Scoot, weighed in on that yesterday. Uh, and indicated that there's not, uh, any anticipation of any interruption of that from Summit County Public Health or, or from the governor's office. So we will, as always, leave it up to the communities, the neighborhoods, the school systems. Um, I'll repeat here what we put on that post yesterday. Uh, they did advise that the, the trunk or treat practice that has kind of popped up, uh, I know some of the area churches do it. Uh, they, uh, they, they are discouraging that, uh, because they don't want, I guess, that type of contact. Now, Green is doing a drive up trunk and treat and they said that's okay. So, you know, if churches are, if you've got questions, give us a call. We'll put you in touch with Summit County Public Health. But in terms of the, the ghosts and the goblins walking up and down the street knocking on doors, have at it. Um, and we're not going to interfere with that. We want you to have a good time, good safe time. And naturally, all you homeowners, if you, you know, if, if you're just not comfortable with that, of course, don't turn the light on. Uh, now watch out for your trash can, but don't turn the, no, that's all, they don't do that anymore, do they? Uh, the, uh, okay, but, uh, yeah, so if, hey, the light's not on, don't knock on the door. That's old school. Uh, okay, stop sign. Uh, we've been talking for a long time of, uh, and, and, and folks up there have been patient Vanderhoof and Kungle Road, they, they'd like to have a four-way stop. We, we are still looking at that. We felt, we got pricing on that. It's going to cost us about $4,800 to, uh, to put the signs up that we need to put up to make it a four-way. Um, you know, we did this recently over at Pearlman. Um, and, uh, it's been well received. The, uh, there are guidelines in the Ohio Revised Code that refer us to the Ohio Traffic Manual Guidelines for, you know, what you're supposed to take into consideration when you're making something a four-way stop. So, uh, and one of those is traffic volume. So we are going to do a traffic study up there again. Uh, I've talked to Brian Kreiner, I talked to him today. He's going to do a five-day study on each one of those roads, give us an idea of what kind of volume of traffic there is. Uh, and, um, if we can justify it, um, unless somebody at council, if, if you don't think we should, let me know that, but otherwise we will spend five grand and we'll put those signs up and um, we, our police are alerted and they're trying to pay attention and we're asking the neighbors to help us with the sign thieves. Because they're out there and, uh, Brian has a concern that these things are going to disappear. So, uh, we'll ask the neighbors to keep an extra eye up there if we're able to put them up, but we're going to try to do that. Um, I, uh, I drove that again, uh, last week because Channel Five came out again, uh, in response to a neighbor's complaint. And wondered if and when Norton was ever going to fix their bridge and, um, um, of course I went up to speak on behalf of New Franklin and say, please fix your bridge. Uh, I know, uh, uh, councilperson McKenny has reached out to, uh, to Norton again. Um, asking them to, uh, uh, give us some idea of what they have in mind. You know, they, they know how I feel about it. Um, so you folks up there, but you know, when you drive it, man, it's, it's, it's just not right. Uh, I will say when I drove up Kungle, you know, I came up center to Cleveland Maslin and cut up Kungle, but when you, when you get to Vanderhoof, it, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have a stop sign there. Uh, on, uh, on Kungle, so, uh, but then when you, you know, it, it sounds like a minor inconvenience unless you're somebody who, who's driving that route. So you guys know I feel about it. I'm going to, we're going to keep battling on that one. It's been difficult to fight that fight with the economy that we're in. So that's made it a little tougher, uh, that everybody's struggling for dollars right now. Um, gosh, I should mention that too, struggling for dollars. Uh, it's been, what day is it? Uh, and they'll tell us, you know, what we could spend out of the federal CARES Act money that we got. I mean, literally. And as of yesterday, I, you, we have received $400,000 from the state of Ohio. We got in what, $200,000 from Summit County? Or did we get the whole four?
Actually, like, like four hundred and three or six.
Okay. From Summit County, that's what we're supposed to get. We got the same number for both because that's based on a, uh, local government fund allocation percentage. So now we got $800,000 sitting in here and, uh, when the house, uh, is about ready to pass a release of some additional funds, that'll bring another 500,000. So we're going to have 1.3 million in here. Um, we, um, there's a question, at, at one time that we could use it all for payroll replacement. Uh, which would be fine because from March to, to the end of the year, I think our payroll was about $3 million. So we could use that 1.3 towards that $3 million. Now, up until about three weeks ago, they said, well, you can only cover 15% of your police and 25% of your fire and dispatch. So that number comes up to about $680,000. Uh, and so, and then a week ago Friday, the Treasury Department issued another um, advisory that seemed to suggest, yeah, you could use all of your payroll for safety forces is presumed to be COVID. So you could use it all for payroll. And we're saying, well, good, we can use the whole 1.2 million. So then yesterday we talked to Summit County. And Summit County says, well, the money you get from Summit County, we've put a cap on it at 15% for your police and 25% for your fire and your dispatch. But go ahead and use all of the state money if you want to. All right? Now, the only problem with that is at some point in time, you got to do an accounting to the federal government as to what your basis was to say that these funds were, you know, that, that, that these services were all COVID related. And when we're saying that on one, for part of it, only 15% of the police was devoted to COVID, but on the state money, we're saying 100% of the police was devoted to COVID. That could be a tough sell. So, uh, I'm, I'm smiling, but it's not funny. Uh, we're, you know, I'm trying to see if Summit County will revisit their restrictions. Uh, but I guess I should focus on the good news that at least it looks like we'll be able to use about 680,000 of that for payroll replacement. And unless something new comes up here, and the clock is ticking on this because it's only good until December 30th. Uh, and we have to make appropriations and make that determination of, you know, what of those funds are we going to pull out and, and, uh, and allocate to, uh, to payroll? Um, we have to do that relatively soon. So, uh, we're having another meeting tomorrow on that to try to, to, uh, to come to that conclusion. As I sit here today, it's likely that we'll just take the 680,000. Um, I don't mean just the 680,000. Thank God we got that coming. And, and if that's the case, I, I finally got something from Spectrum because we're, we're trying to ex- expand some broadband to households that don't have it. Here in Summit County, I mean, here in New Franklin. And I got the forum over here somewhere. Uh, we identified, I don't, close to 30 houses that have none. Spectrum has talked about, uh, extending it out there to the tune of about $250,000. Uh, we can use that, um, that CARES money for that. Uh, that's, that's a, that's an approved use of the CARES funds. So certainly before I would give it back to the federal government, I'll come to you and ask you to approve that we, a contract with Spectrum to go ahead and run that. It doesn't run into their house. It just runs into front of their house. They're going to have to pay to hook up like everybody else does. But they can't do that right now because the line doesn't run in front of their house. And we're talking about the areas out in Fairland, most of them are out in the southwest side. And we think there'll be a benefit for us down the road for development in some of those areas that, for future development as well. And we think there'll be a benefit for us down the road for development in some of those areas that, uh, for future development as well. So if it turns out we can't spend that money anywhere else, uh, I'm gonna be coming to you and ask you to approve that. I, I intended to try to get Summit County to approve that separately, but now they've advised that they've pretty much capped out on their ninety-six million. And it sounds like the same thing is true at the state. So, uh, uh, that's the likelihood, so. I, I know that's a lot, but that's what's going on with, with CARES funding. And, and like, let's celebrate the good news. Uh, that's six hundred and seventy thousand dollars of, uh, of, of payroll replacement, that's a big deal, obviously. Uh, so we're, we're very happy to have that. The census, uh, will, you know, they could have extended this in Washington, and extended it to the end of the year, but they chose not to for, I don't know what reason. So they gotta get it over with by September thirtieth now. Uh, and, um, we are eighty percent accounted for in New Franklin. So that's higher than the national, right now, the national is at sixty-five percent. Ohio's at sixty-nine percent, Summit County's at seventy-three percent. Greene is at seventy-seven percent. So hooray for New Franklin. We're at eighty. On the other hand, out of the thirty-one, uh, um, political entities, we're only fifteenth. So, uh, we can do a little better, we'll try to get a last-minute push. And, uh, that's what's going on with the census. Uh, next Tuesday is, um, National Voter Registration Day, we had that on our website. And right up here at the Portage Lakes Library, Tuesday, September twenty-second, noon to two, four to seven. You can get up there and get registered if you have not gotten registered. Uh, and let me see, the last thing I, I will talk about, and I'm sorry to go on so long, is the Tudor House. We've been talking about a variety of things up there. We're in the process of planning next year's events, we're hoping to be able to pick up where we left off last summer. And we are still having these discussions relative to a management agreement. And, um, this would be an example of, you know, I mentioned earlier that, I might come into a conversation, this doesn't make me special, I, I just like, I'm listening with one point of view, and then you hear a lot of things, and you may change your point of view. So we had this, you know, we had this gentleman come to us with a, a proposal for possible management agreement. We've had some conversations about it. The Tudor House Commission has met on it, we met again, uh, Monday night on it. Uh, we had a couple of public meetings, we'll have another. And, um, the, the proposal was, um, phase one, build a pavilion, phase two, build a four-season room, and then perhaps do something further down the road. Uh, and there was a lot of discussion about this pavilion, and where will it go? Should it be at the lake? Is it gonna be too much noise? Um, and we listened to that, and I met with some of the people that, that had concerns, and I, I think we allayed some of those concerns. There was this push to put this thing down at the lake, a lot of people said that wasn't a good idea. Uh, they're probably right. So we revisited that, but let me cut to the chase. What we finally did, we got back with the commission, and, and we thought, we talked about, what do we really want? And, and really, what we've been wanting out here, we wanted, we were gonna do a pavilion, because that was the cheapest thing. But what we really would like to have is that four-seasons room. So that when we have our Christmas event, we don't try to put five hundred people in the Tudor House. Uh, we've got, but we've got a room that we can put them in, and we can put the choirs and let them sing, and they're not out there in the, in the cold, uh, standing in the mud under a, you know, under a tent or in a pavilion. And that, that room could be used for a variety of purposes throughout the year. So the focus has shifted, at least in what we're going to ask by way of a proposal, a request for proposals from the first gentleman that approached us and from, and from anybody else who would be interested, is to go with what, what they, what people have been calling phase two, go with that first. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna ask a request for proposals to come out, give us an idea of building a, a four-season room on the side where the garage is, not where the, not where the tents go. Um, do some patios, do some improvement to the driveway. Be willing to pay for all that, pay for all the construction costs, be willing to take on the, uh, the maintenance cost of the Tudor House. Be willing to, uh, uh, reserve, uh, dates for community events. And, you know, we talked with the, uh, with the Tudor House Commission about how many that should be, and it's, well, gee, we don't wanna lose the Tudor House and everything we do at the Tudor House. And, you know, I, I, I pointed out to them, in two thousand seventeen, uh, we did exactly zero events at the Tudor House. And the same thing is true in two thousand sixteen. So when we talk about, gee, we don't wanna lose all those, we don't wanna lose the right to do things at the Tudor House. We haven't been doing anything at the Tudor House. Now, we got up to about a half a dozen last year, and we'll probably try to carve out a couple of months. But in any event, and, and we put restrictions on hours that, that, uh, they can do events out there, we get restrictions on the types of events, uh, a requirement that if there's gonna be another phase, it would have to be, uh, approved, you know, approved by council. And of course, this would have to be approved by council also. But the, the thrust of it is that the, and the, and the commission unanimously, uh, approved this recommendation at a meeting on Monday. And, uh, they're very excited about it, actually. So we're gonna, you know, the intention is to draw up a request for proposals. We'll see what kind of proposals we get, we'll have those discussions, if we get something solid, we eventually will bring it to council. Uh, and, uh, in the meantime, I, I do plan to schedule at least one more event out there to, for the public, you know, let them know exactly what direction at least the commission thinks we ought to go. So that's what's going on at the Tudor House, and that's all I got, thanks.
All right, thanks, Paul Finian, Susan.
Not too much here, uh, just as the mayor said, we are trying to, uh, in fact, tomorrow, we're gonna be discussing this again on, uh, how to put together the numbers, uh, for, to make use of the CARES money that we have received from both the state and from the county. And, um, so eventually, once we get this all nailed down, we will be coming back to you with a, uh, with an additional appropriation, a request to handle these, you know, to handle this, uh, pay, this payroll and the situation on the both funds, because there's two. We actually had to create two specific funds, one for the one from the state, one for the one from the county. So really, that just adds to the many things that we already have to do, but, um, we just keep on truckin'. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Right, thank you. Okay, move into old business? Any other old business, any old business? All right, how about new business?
I have a couple of things.
Yes, sir.
Will Mr. Kepler be hosting another brush day for the fall?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we haven't set that up yet, but, uh, we did, actually, I think we might even have earmarked a couple of dates. But I think we pushed them back into November because of, uh, the, the change of season seems to happen so late. And I think we're locked in for two dates, and we got grant money for that, right, Susan?
Yes.
Is that reworks?
Yes.
Yeah. But I, yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll get those dates and let people know, Jim.
Okay, super. Last night, I was listening and watching the BZA meeting, and, uh, uh, they had the meeting, uh, in council chambers. And one person was remote, and Barry was in his office. They use, uh, some technology that's different than what we're using. But the, the thing with it is that I couldn't hear people talking, whether it's because of the mask, whether it's lack of microphones or whatnot. It's just like, okay, and even the, uh, the BZA member that was, uh, remote had to ask a couple of times, I, I didn't hear that, can you? So as we move forward, and eventually, hopefully soon, we get back into council chambers, is things setups are obviously gonna be different and whatnot. Maybe now we should be looking at and working with Robert, uh, as far as, uh, what type of, uh, microphones we have available within the room, uh, not just for members of council or, or members of other boards that are, are using the room, but also for speakers, uh, whether it's, uh, somebody sitting in the audience. Uh, that's normally the case when we have a council meeting, or somebody is coming up to a podium where there's no microphone, uh, so that when these things are broadcast, they can be, they can be held, heard.
We talked about that, uh, today, and, uh, Barry, who, uh, I, I didn't know this until just a short while ago, that, uh, he used to be in broadcasting. Uh, he, he's actually, there's a really neat picture of him when he was a DJ at some radio station. But anyway, uh, he, he noted the same problem, and he, uh, has suggested that we purchase a, a higher-grade microphone. Uh, he's got something in mind. I, I told him to go with it, and I, I don't, Susan, I don't even know if you got to see your email, but I think he sent something to you. So we're, we're, we're gonna do that, Jim. And, and Barry seems to think he knows what it is we need to satisfy that, so I'm gonna trust him on that one and see what happens.
Okay, super. I just want, let people know, this is in the very early stages, but, um, I'm working with, uh, uh, Summit County Councilperson, uh, McKenney, Bethany McKenney, uh, to put together a New Franklin Flu Shot Day. We'll be, uh, doing it at the fire station, and, uh, so we're trying to get Summit County involved. And, uh, hopefully soon, we'll have some good information about this and when it'll be happening and, and what's all involved. So I look forward to, to that and making that happen for everybody. The other thing, uh, the last couple of weeks, I've, I've talked with some new families in the area, and, um, they've talked about home sales within New Franklin, and we all know how quickly homes have been selling in New Franklin. And, um, we're seeing a, a shift in basically the makeup of New Franklin. We're seeing a lot of younger families coming in to the, uh, city, and young kids and, and whatnot, and we see all the time, or hear all the time, about concerns of speeding on roads and streets, and every street has, has a concern. But, but one of the, uh, families I talked with brought up these signs, um, the children's slow children's sign, and how some of them look good, and some of them not so good. So I'm wondering if there's something we could do to, uh, uh, refresh the signs. I know Mr. Kepler doesn't have anything to do most days now, uh, that he has an assistant. If there's, um, if there's a different design we can do and, and start slowly kind of, uh, replacing these signs, and maybe they, they'll stand out a little bit more, maybe catch the attention of a driver that might be going a little bit faster than they should be in the neighborhood. Where, there, there's a lot of young kids, I mean, look at this sign, what the heck's going on there? You got two different messages. But, you know, there's, there's some really young kids in the neighborhood, and they're gonna be out on their bicycles, especially next summer. They're gonna start growing, they're gonna be, a lot of our streets don't have sidewalks. So, um, if there's something we could do to, to try to fix this, or, you know, freshen things up a little bit, grab some attention. I think that'd be a, a wonderful thing.
Yeah, I'll, um, I, I'll, I'll pass that on to our grants guy too, Lila Matheny, and see, maybe, uh, maybe there's some safety money, and maybe there's some grant money that we can get to, to, uh, to help with that as well. In terms of what kind of signs, I'm at a loss, but, uh, I always like that, do a Boy Scout, man, that Boy Scout always looks, yeah. He's got his knickers on, man, that's an old sign.
Right. Right, yeah, and, and you know, uh, because families are staying home more because they can't go on vacation or whatnot, and kids playing out and stuff, this might be COVID-related. Just saying. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Jim. Any other new business? All right, I got a, just a couple of comments I got here, and thanks, uh, for handling that one, Katie.
No problem.
Nice work. We had one here, it says, Adamson, keep New Franklin great, Council Two. So that's for you, Paul.
Okay, we're doing our best.
Yep, and then one that says, uh, we have one of our residents said, can't wait until we can tie into water.
Yeah, we're working on it.
So other than that, that's all I got, and we had one that, uh, Katie directed him to watch the beginning of the meeting, and he had some questions about the dispatch thing, but, yeah, if he gets back and watches the, the whole meeting, then he'll get all the information he needs off of that. So that's all I got, Katie, anything?
No, in fact, I didn't see those couple come through, so.
All right, yeah, they were cut a little bit earlier. So anyhow, all right, anybody have anything else? No executive session, Paul?
No.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, ayes have it.
Thanks, everybody.
October seventh, twenty twenty, we'll, uh, go from there. Thanks, everybody, good night.
Good night.
Good night.